I'm going to ask the public, if you have any electronic devices, please turn them off. And any of the council, just please turn them off. And welcome to our meeting tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And is there any declarations of conflict of interest amongst Counselor Garan?
Through you, Mayor. 8.3 Community Services Report. The significant event status, Chapice Springs Country Festival.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And 8.13. I have a conflict there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Van Nandelen.
Yeah, I have a conflict with 7.1. My wife's on the board at the Arrow Health Team.
7.1. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Through you, Mr. Chair. To Counselor Bjorkman. Counselor Bjorkman, can you just repeat your conflict of interest there? I apologize.
Yes, so I have a conflict at 8.13. The Jason McKee rezoning application as I own property abutting that property.
Is that a conflict? Is that it? You declare it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and we'll move right into the adoption of published agenda. Seconder? All in favor? Scary.
Item five on the agenda, adoption of minutes. 5.1, adoption of the minutes from the November 19th regular meeting of council.
Counselor Van Nandelen. Seconder, Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions? All in favor? Motion? Scary.
5.2, special council meeting minutes from November 19th, 2018.
Have a mover? Counselor Bondi. Seconder by Counselor Garan. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Scary.
And 5.3, adoption of the minutes from the inaugural meeting of December 3rd, 2018.
Mover, Counselor Van Nandelen and Counselor Bowman. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Scary. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Under item six on the agenda, under presentations. 6.1 relating, our first presentation and set of presentations relates to recreational cannabis retail stores. We have two presentations, and this will be in conjunction after the presentations with the Planning Department Report 2018-47. But first, from the Windsor Essex County Health Unit, we have Eric Nadalyn, Manager of Chronic Disease and Injury Prevention.
Thank you. If you can come forward right here to make your presentation. Good. Do you have a little button right there on that box there? A gray button? If you can press that? Okay, you got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good evening, your worship members of council. I'm here to talk to you today about some of the municipal considerations for cannabis retail in our communities now that we do have recreational cannabis legalized and recognizing that there's an important decision for this council to make with regard to opting in or opting out of retail cannabis in our community. So at the onset, I want to make it clear that when I'm referring to cannabis within the context of this conversation, I'm referring to non-medicinal cannabis. I'm not referring to cannabis for medicinal reasons or for therapeutic reasons. I'm referring to cannabis for recreational consumption. So just a quick overview of some of the things that I'll be discussing today. I'm going to talk a little bit about, very briefly, about cannabis use in Windsor and Essex County, what our rates look like relative to the province, some board resolutions that were passed by the Windsor Essex Board of Health leading up to legalization, the retail of other legal but harmful substances, most notably tobacco and alcohol, and, sorry, I skipped through that too quickly, and cannabis and its impact on vulnerable populations or sensitive areas, and then I'll get into our recommendation around opting in or opting out. So prior to legalization, cannabis was the most commonly used illegal substance in Canada. You see here that we had past year usage rates of 12% among those 15 years of older and older. What's really important to note about this stat is that it's based on self-report of an illegal product. So it's reasonable to assume that that is a suppressed figure based on, I guess, public acceptability of declaration of consuming cannabis. So we do have higher rates among men than women, and higher among youth and young adults as compared to the rest of the population. In Windsor Essex, we have similar rates in that our highest rates of usage are among those between the age group of 15 and 29. Another number of health effects associated with cannabis use, recreational cannabis use, and you can see that they broadly cross these three sectors. So there are impacts on mental health, there are impacts on physical health, and then risk of injury, and most notably there in terms of motor vehicle collision. So on January 14th, or January 14th of 2016, the Windsor Essex Board of Health passed first resolution advocating for a public health approach to cannabis legalization. On October 18th, and you can see here through this timeline how quickly things are changing and how, I guess, volatile this regulatory framework has been over the last year, where the Board of Health encouraged municipalities to develop strict licensing, planning, and zoning regulations, which is something now that we know you won't have the opportunity to do. So on October 18th, 2018, which is the day following legalization, the Windsor Essex Board of Health passed a resolution encouraging municipalities to opt out of cannabis retail. It also asked for, or it encourages, it encouraged the province to establish limits on the number of retailers in a given geographic area. It also asked the province to set additional regulations with respect to proximity of retail outlets and vulnerable population or sensitive areas. And it asked for the province to provide municipalities with additional options in terms of regulating cannabis retail at the local level. To date, what we've seen is that there is a 150-meter step back from schools, and that would be the only regulatory restriction on retail sale at this point. As a point of reference, our Board of Health asked for a 500-meter, or recommended a 500-meter step back from not only schools but a number of other sensitive areas for vulnerable populations like you. In addition, and of note for our municipalities, is that our Board of Health also recommended revising existing smoking definitions within municipal smoke-free outdoor space bylaws to include cannabis within their definition. As it stands, the town of Essex has a broad enough definition that it would cover cannabis as it stands, but it doesn't hurt to more explicitly outline that. So these are some of the recommendations, or some of the regulations around cannabis retail in Ontario. So I mentioned the 150-meter step back distance from retail, or from schools, from retail stores. There's no cap on the number of retailers per municipality at this point in time. Municipalities are prohibited from using licensing or land use to control the placement or number of retail outlets. Private recreational storefronts are meant to be standalone stores only. There's a restriction on access to these stores of 19-plus, and there's zero tolerance for any retailer who provides cannabis to anyone under the age of 19. In addition, there are restrictions on the hours of operation, and they've laid out some, the licensing framework for storefronts to apply to, it's a three-step licensing framework that I'll get into in a moment. What I want to bring up again within the context of these changing regulations is that even last week, we had a significant change in the regulations that limited the number of retail stores initially to only 25 in Ontario. These regulations are constantly changing, and that's why it brought us to our recommendation around opting out. So this is the licensing framework. First, retailers will need to apply for an operator's license that basically allows you to run a store. That will be opened up as of actually this week to apply for that retail store authorization. Now, you might be thinking, you know, we have until January 22nd to make our decision here. But the second step of the licensing framework speaks to actual retail store authorization. So that's what permits the layout and the location of the store. So that is what will be impacted by the opt-out decision. There's a 15-day public consultation window on that location, which isn't much, speaks to the importance of being prepared and able to mobilize around that window to be able to provide feedback from municipalities, public health, school boards, and law enforcement, and in addition to other stakeholders who may have feedback on a proposed location. And finally, there's cannabis retail manager license that basically gets applied to the most responsible person at the store to be able to have an accountable person within that store for the operations of it. And as you know, municipalities have the ability to opt out of retail by January 22nd. So there are a number of concerns for municipalities, in particular around areas not covered by the Smoke Free Ontario Act, so public consumption of these products. We have the potential for increased density and number of points of access, which we know from our experiences with alcohol and tobacco can lead to increased consumption and the associated harms with increased consumption. Normalization of use, which is something within the context of tobacco, that through smoke-free outdoor space bylaws, like the one in the town of Essex, you're trying to de-normalize public consumption of those types of products in order to protect vulnerable populations, and decrease success in attempts to abstain from use, so those who are looking to quit, and also, obviously, the undermining of health warnings that go along with these products. With that, we have increased exposure of smoking behavior to vulnerable populations, like children and youth, like those who are seeking treatment for substance use disorder, and as well as individuals who are susceptible to addiction or with mental illness, and in particular around low-income neighborhoods. So this is just a brief snapshot of a little bit of the evidence around retail density and proximity of other legal but harmful products. Again, I'm referring to tobacco and alcohol here, and I apologize for the busy slide. I'll use this one instead. But we know that from tobacco and alcohol research, that retail outlet density contributes to increased consumption and harms. And so we've seen a positive association between alcohol outlet density and excessive alcohol consumption and the related harms. Also, with regard to retail outlet towards youth-serving facilities, we know that schools with a greater number of retailers surrounding them have higher smoking rates. So those with tobacco convenience store that sells tobacco closer to a school, we do have higher smoking rates at those schools. With regard to other sensitive areas, we have a higher concentration of tobacco retailers in lower-income neighborhoods. So it's something that, you know, while we are speculating to some extent, we do have research that shows within tobacco and alcohol that this is the case. And less restrictions on where substances can be consumed do increase that risk of normalization, as well as exposure and impairment. For all of these reasons, the Windsor Essex County Health Unit and the Board of Health are recommending that municipalities opt out. If not permanently, then at least initially to better prepare for some of these potential harms associated with cannabis retail. The deadline, obviously, is the 22nd, which we recognize is a very short turnaround for new councils like your own. And so we feel that the time to prepare, the time to conduct a more thorough public engagement process is very, very important, and there is an outlined schedule of that within the report prepared by administration. The one note I want to make with regard to that timeline is that cannabis retail storefronts will not be permitted to operate until April 1st. So if you are looking to other municipalities to make reference to the sorts of lessons that they might be learning through this process, you may want to extend that consultation window beyond April 1st so that you are able to look at some of the lessons learned from those municipalities. And I mentioned a couple of times as well that the regulations around these continue to change. It is possible, I would be speculating to say that they would change again, but it is possible to say that they might change again between now and April 1st. So based on the decision of different municipalities to opt in or out, so that's why we feel that opting out, if not permanently, then at least temporarily to learn a little bit more is the best course of action for the public health of our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll go to council. Is there any questions from any of the counselors here tonight? Counselor Bjorkman.
Thank you. Through you, the mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Thanks for sharing this information with us. One of the questions I've had in this is, when it says a standalone store, so I've asked for a definition of a standalone store. Is this a store that is standing with no stores on either side of it? Or is this just, it can be in a plaza that is a store that only sells marijuana products?
Yeah, our current understanding is that it would be similar to a lot of the regulations we're seeing around some of the specialty vape stores or tobacconists where they could be a part of a plaza, but they would be restricted in what they would be able to sell. So the standalone aspect, as far as I understand it, refers to they stand alone in the product that they're able to offer. And so they wouldn't necessarily have to be a separate physical location. But I can confirm that. I have to apologize, I don't know that answer.
And just further that, looking at your page of the resolutions, October 18th, where talking about municipalities opting out of the retail model, there's a number of things here. Most of them actually are things we have no control over, right? This is, you know, the province established limits on number of retails. The province sets additional regulations. All of these things are pretty much out of our hands. We're talking about going to a, how many pieces of paper here? Our municipal cannabis policy statement. So if we make a municipal policy statement, and we put in there that we've got vulnerable communities, we have other issues in our town, places, we want to stay away from parks, we want to stay away from different areas, does that policy have teeth in it? Is that something that we can say, we've made this policy, when somebody applies to get a license for a location, can we stand on that and have any strength to it?
So at this point in time, the AGCO has kind of the final authority to grant an authorization or not. What we've heard through our communications with AGCO is that they're going to take those types of consultations very seriously, for what that's worth. They can choose to approve or not approve an application on their own merits, but they have committed to this 15-day consultation window to be able to receive feedback from stakeholders like municipalities or public health or school boards. The one thing to note is that 15 days is a really tight window to get that sort of consultation turned around. It's unprecedented in terms of what we've seen in other regulations related to harmful but legal products. And I think it speaks to the importance of being prepared to turn that around very quickly, and so mobilizing those stakeholders within that window. There's a lot of work that could be done in the period leading up to retail stores being open that would better prepare municipalities to be able to respond within that window. You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Malash.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden, to Mr. Nadalyn. Thank you for coming out this evening and making this presentation very thorough. You said at the beginning that you were talking about recreational cannabis. So this report would be different if we were talking about medicinal cannabis?
So medicinal cannabis regulated federally in the way that it's, in the way that users are able to access it. The model around that has not changed significantly based on these new regulations provincially.
So these stores, I'm guessing, are going to handle both medicinal and recreational. And if they are handling both, and that's what I'm saying, like, the stores that you're talking about with the health unit have a different view if it was just medicinal as having a storefront?
So, oh, I apologize. Through your worship, the model for access for medicinal cannabis would be completely separate from this model for non-medicinal. So they wouldn't necessarily be accessed through the same stores if you wanted to use a recreational license in your prescription, or, sorry, a medicinal license and your prescription in order to access it. There are different forms of access for that. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Nadalyn, I'd like to know, through the chair, Mr. Nadalyn, I'd like you to know if your group or your provincial or national over-organization raised these issues on page 10 with the federal government? You know, the vulnerable populations, the normalization of use, the, you know, the intensity, increases the usage, the intensity of the outlets. I'd like to know if you made those points to the federal government. I'd like to know when you did so, so I could look up what it was your group said, and I'd like to know what their answer was. Thank you.
So the federal government submitted consultations over the course of the last, would have been two years, on what the regulatory framework looked like. From there, the provincial governments had a similar set of consultations, and we did submit feedback to those consultations, in particular, that reflected our Board of Health's direction around location to sensitive areas. I would have to get back to you on an exact date that those were submitted, but our feedback was provided, as well as the feedback of the Association of Local Public Health Agencies, the Ontario Public Health Association, and a number of other groups at the provincial level.
Through Van Nandelen.
So since they proceeded anyway with no restrictions, I take it that they ignored your requests?
Not unlike a lot of these feedback and consultation documents, we don't necessarily hear back based on our recommendations. What we do, what we do get is kind of a thank you for submitting, and that's reflected, we hope that they reflect our feedback within the final set of regulations.
Thank you. Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing forward this information for us tonight. It's a whole lot more information now, right? Like, it's, our agenda comes out Thursday at 4:00. We have four days to really read, digest, and we have another delegation here tonight. So I'm, in my mind, I would really like to just buy time before we even say we're going to opt out. If we opt out, we opt out, but right now, I want to really even digest this before we even take that plunge to opting out. Because I feel like if we opt out, it's going to be a while before we opt in. Like, I'm no rookie here, right? I've been here a little bit now. So I thank you for the information. I'm hoping that council takes a little bit more time to digest this, to listen to our next delegation, and then to also listen to other delegations. Because the nature of when our agenda comes out, other people couldn't get on it tonight, right? There's people that couldn't come out and speak on the other side, and some, you know, maybe they wanted to talk about, talk to some of these points, right? This should be public information out there, and then anybody that wants to counter these points or provide other pros and cons can. And if we vote on this tonight, we're not allowing our public that opportunity, because four days isn't very long. So if we have over the holidays, we raise this again in January, it gives us more time as a council, as a new council, as a very new council with a very contentious issue to digest the information that you've provided for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have one question myself. Have you been in conversation with the senior levels of government on LCBO locations instead of a standalone retail store?
Those types of consultations, just a point of clarification, are you referring to the previous regulatory model under the previous government that was LCBO-operated? Okay, that's helpful. Yes, we did provide consultation on that as well. And certainly, that model would have been more in line with a public health approach to retail access.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Garan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. A lot of the residents that I've been speaking to have concerns about smell and odor. Can you speak to us about that? Coming from the retail stores that have been operating illegally perhaps in our municipality.
Through your worship, the nuisance associated with smell or odor, we do hear, I can speak to it from a perspective that tobacco enforcement officers within the public health, within our public health unit, receive a high volume of complaints under the Smoke Free Ontario Act related to cannabis in indoor spaces, most notably in multi-unit housing. And I would say that that has taken up a high volume of their time over the course of the last few years, even prior to legalization. So certainly, there are considerations to be made around nuisance. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Further, can you clarify, I heard you, but I didn't hear you clearly, on, you mentioned about the government's recent decision to allow just 25 licenses at this point in time. You'd made a mention to that was one of the reasons or the main reason that Health has recommended us opting out?
Through your worship, to the member of council, we, that particular change in regulation happened even between me submitting this slide back to the town and today's presentation. So that was a recent announcement, I believe, on Thursday evening, that had to do with the supply chain issues and not being able to supply a high number of cannabis retailers in the province. And so they're moving towards an initial 25 stores that will be applied to and awarded by lottery, and then phasing in implementation of more stores over the course of the next few months after April 1st.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else on council? I want to thank you for the presentation, and if I can have council receive the presentation and a seconder on that. Counselor Bondi, all in favor? Scary. Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our second presentation in conjunction with 6.1 is Sergeant Kelly Labonte from the Essex County OPP, Manager, Member of the Community Street Crimes Unit.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I don't have a formal presentation. My presence here is mainly to answer any questions that council might have. I do thank Mr. Nadalyn for his presentation. There's nothing that is in his presentation that wouldn't have been included in any of my notes. I will say from the onset that, at the current time, the Ontario Provincial Police, and for that matter, any law enforcement agency within the province, has no room whatsoever for these storefront operations up until April 1st when they become legal. We've had a number of them across the province that the police have shut down under the authority of the Cannabis Act. My concerns going out to the community for any of these current operating storefront locations primarily would be the supply of the cannabis and where they're getting that from. I would suspect, highly suspect that any kind of supply for these storefronts right now is coming from the black market, and the quality and control of that product cannot be trusted. As far as the opting in or opting out, the OPP specifically as the police of jurisdiction for the Essex, or for County of Essex, will support any decision made by council in regards to the storefront cannabis, whether they opt in or opt out. I do know from the reading and research that I've done that the opt-in and opt-out isn't necessarily a two-way street. So you can opt out at this point and opt back in at any point you so choose, but I believe, unless I'm mistaken, that if you choose to opt in, you cannot go back on that right away. So it, in my mind, anyway, I think it makes a little bit more sense that if council still needs to make some decisions, it still wants to put some thought and some research and some consultation, as you said, Counselor, that the opting out strategy is probably the best choice for you right now. We will support the council, as I said, in any initiatives, the locations and whatnot. You had asked, your worship- You, you had asked, your worship, I think it was your worship, about the, the odor and issues with that. Part of the problem with the entire legislation is that, as you know, it was rushed through rather quickly by the federal government. The provinces are still trying to keep up. Legislation is still trying to keep up. For example, for odor, we don't necessarily have any laws right now that govern the odor coming from some of these storefronts, and even some of the producers. Where you would have some teeth, so to speak, would be possibly through Health Canada, through some of the, the plants, you know, your, your better, more regulated plants, such as your Fries and whatnot, are, are doing things properly. Your ad hoc producers that are popping up around the county are not necessarily following the guidelines and regulations stipulated out by Health Canada, and that, that would be where, that regulatory body would give you a little bit more teeth, so to speak, in enforcement. I'm not sure if the council has any questions specifically about the act, or about police involvement, but I'm happy to hear them.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions from council? The sergeant? Thank you very much. Counselor Van Nenel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. How hard is it to buy marijuana in Essex right now?
Illegally? It would not be difficult. It would not be difficult to buy marijuana anywhere in the province of Ontario right now.
But in our town, how many access points do you think there are right now?
That number I wouldn't have off the top of my head. I can, I'd have to do some research on that, in consultation with our Ontario, our OSCE units, our organized crime enforcement units, and our Community Street Crimes units, would probably give us a better indication, but even that wouldn't be a hard and fast number. It would be a constantly rotating fluid thing.
But it wouldn't be a small number, would it?
I would suspect not.
Thanks.
The black market is, they make a lot of money off of the sale of marijuana, and I suspect that any community, this one not excluded, is going to be in the situation where once these storefronts come up and they're legal, the black market is not going to want to lose all of that money. So whether the black market's going to decrease their cost of production, for lack of a better term, to make it affordable to sell, remains to be seen. I would suspect that you've seen a lot of storefront operations across the province that voluntarily closed once the legislation was passed, and are waiting for the April 1st deadline. I suspect a lot of those shops may have an influence from the black market, but I can't speak, I can't speak for sure, and I couldn't identify which specific shops. But it would be safe to say that the black market is still going to have a significant hand in the pot in regards to some of these retail outlets. Now with the 25-store restriction across the province, I don't suspect that you're going to see too many pop up too soon. I suspect that that's going to be a slower process than just a few months after April 1st. The province has to first address the supply issue. They have a shortage of supply for both the medical right now and recreational market as they gear up. And as it stands right now, the only legal venue to access recreational marijuana in the province is through the Ontario Cannabis Store online. Anything else that you see, whether it's a storefront, well, in regards to storefronts is, is not permitted, it's not, it's not legal, and again, I would caution as to the quality of the supply of the product that they're, that they're selling to the community. Thank you.
6.1.1 on the agenda is Planning Department Report 201847, re-cannabis retail stores.
So Donna Hunter, our CAO, would like to speak right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, worship. Just a few words before we get into the detailed discussions on this report. The report before council tonight on cannabis retail stores recommends that the town opt out of allowing these stores in the Town of Essex. But key words in that recommendation are opting out for now. Opting out for now allows for thorough consultation with stakeholders and members of the public, which is key to the development of municipal, of a municipal cannabis retail policy statement. It's allowing residents a voice in the policy statement, and it's critical that they be allowed a voice. And it's something that council and administration have embraced in similar situations in the past. As noted earlier, once the policy statement is complete and approved by council, the Town of Essex will be in a position to opt back in, should council wish to do so. You may ask why the public stakeholder consultation process hasn't started, or didn't start earlier? Unfortunately, the regulations were only introduced by the province in November, at which time staff attended the first round of training on these regulations. To start a survey before that would have been difficult, given there was limited knowledge of what was to come in those regulations. In fact, other municipalities who did go ahead with the survey before the regulations came out, had to actually release or reissue their, their survey. As noted by Mr. McNadlin, the province's efforts to implement cannabis retail stores is continuing to change. As he noted, in September of 2018, the province announced that there would be no cap on the number of stores. And then just last week, the province again advised that the number of stores would be capped at 25 and be, would be permitted on the basis of a lottery system. As noted in the report, a survey will be issued by the Town of Essex on December 18th. If desirable, council can forego the decision to opt out until the January 14th meeting, after which the survey results will be known. However, please keep in mind that this input will be limited to 1% to 2% of our population. Given the Christmas shutdown from December 24th to January 3rd, there's really insufficient time to carry out full stakeholder consultations and public meetings. Council typically looks to administration to make a recommendation, which we did, after much collaboration amongst ourselves. The recommendation reflects administration's belief that full consultation with the residents is extremely important in this matter. In the end, it's up to council to make a decision, regardless of our recommendation. When council is ready, I'm sure Rita, your bureau or planner, can either provide an overview of the, of the report, or can answer any questions that council may wish to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any, any questions to Ms. Hunter? No? Okay, thank you. We need a motion to, to receive this report.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, the recommended motion with the noted recommendations.
Have that motion. Counselor Bondi with a question?
Mayor Snively, I would actually like to table the motion until January 14th. I think everybody's aware of my thoughts and reasoning as to why. I, I don't see why we can't have a couple of times to consult. We can consult on the opting out, and then we can do, we can proceed.
I need a second or, somebody, a counselor going to agree with that? Second or to table it? To table it? Counselor Verbeek?
Okay. Point of clarification? We can't table something that we can postpone definitely to another time. If we postpone definitely to another time, then we can argue the motion, not the subject of the motion, but whether or not we should go for that, so there is discussion. That's, that's the way we got to go.
No.
May I make a friendly amendment, that we discuss it, that we move this report to January 14th? Can we discuss it then?
If I may, Counselor Bondi, to me, to me, I, I don't know what, what direction we could go there, because we can, you know, if we opt out, we can always opt, opt back in, anytime, anytime. So I don't, I don't know what the, what your motive is there, what your direction, why?
Point of order. There is a motion on the table. We can, we need to either vote on that motion, discuss it, or remove it from the table and, and begin again.
And remove it? To postpone it? To postpone it? And, and Kimberly Verbeek, second, all in favor of that, that motion?
I'd like to speak to it. We can see to postponing a motion, just to the motion, not the subject matter. Okay, so I would like to speak to that. I'm, I'm not in favor of us postponing immediately. I think that we need to discuss it. We need to say some things publicly about the information that we have right now, before we move to postpone this subject.
Oh, Counselor Bjorkman, if you want to start a discussion on it? Go right ahead. Okay. Somebody else wants to speak to the motion? Okay, Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I, as I did state, that the agenda comes out at Thursday at four, and it doesn't allow for opportunities for anybody else in our community to speak to us about opting out. I did read my report, Ms. CAO, I, I did read it, I read it a few times. I know that it's opting out for now, but there's still consequences of opting out for now. There's still a message that we're sending opting out now.
Point of order. We can't speak to the, the subject matter. We can only speak to the motion.
Okay.
If you're in favor or against, and why?
Could you address that through the chair, please?
I, I see only value in delaying it a month, or, I don't know, till January 14th. I see only value right now. There has been a lot of people talking to different members of council, and I feel like it's a knee-jerk reaction to vote on it right now. There's a whole bunch more information that we got tonight, and I'd like to read it before I vote on opting out right now. I don't, doesn't mean I'm not going to vote to opt, I just want to be able to delay this, because it's a lot, and I have, four days is not a lot to digest all of this, to make a sound decision. And when the time comes, I do want a recorded vote.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Van Nenel?
I don't really care whether we vote on it tonight or in three weeks, because I think this issue's been around for so long. We all know where we stand. I don't think anybody's going to change their minds, whether we're going to go ahead, opt in or opt out. I just don't see that it's, I mean, you can listen to some more people, but I don't see that we're going to hear any, any new evidence. So I can go either way on this. I, I think I'm just going to go with the flow.
I, I too would like to hear some information tonight. I'm, I know that I'm not going to be here for the January 14th meeting. I'm going to be out of town. I would like to hear some, some, what administration has to say on their report. If I don't hear it tonight, I won't be able to hear it publicly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Verbeek?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely don't feel like I have enough information, and I want to know if there's a mechanism to, to get some public input prior to making the final decision to opt in or opt out. I'm only hearing, until tonight, all of my resident feedback has been in support of opting in. Now I'm hearing some great input in, in opposition to it, and I'm just wondering, I mean, can, can we have a little more time to get some more information? I disagree with the counselor that says we, we all have our minds made up. I was elected to represent the people in, in the best way that, you know, I felt they wanted me to, and I'm not sure what all the residents would, would like me to do on this issue. Is there an, an avenue to get more information before we vote?
Through you, worship. As I noted earlier, we are issuing a survey, online survey, tomorrow, but that's the only thing that we can arrange within now, because of the Christmas shutdown. And that meeting on the 14th, we don't have enough time to arrange a public consultation process, because you have to provide notice to people. They have to know at least two weeks in advance, three weeks in advance, that there's something coming up where they are going to try and attend. So all you're going to have available to you in terms of input from your residents is the results of a survey, which traditionally is around 1% to 2% of your population.
Anything else, Counselor Ruby? Counselor Garen?
Through you, your mayor. Whether we make a decision of any kind tonight, or we can wait a couple more weeks, I, I'd like to actually wait a little longer and, and gather my thoughts and get some of my information I like to get, talk to my residents in my ward, and get their feedback as well, even if it is not in a public forum, as you discussed, there may not be time to put something like that together. But I'd feel a lot more comfortable putting it off until the 14th, and I think my residents would feel more comfortable with that, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other fellow? Okay. Yep, you can speak last year's motion if there's nobody else. Counselor Bond, Counselor Bondi? Oh, pardon me. Counselor Bowman?
... There are two issues that are coming up here. One is medical marijuana, the medical cannabis, and the recreational. This mostly speaks to the recreational. Most of the questions we're getting back is for the medical side of it. They're two different issues altogether, and, and I think that there's no, you know, whether you wait today or two, a week from, or two weeks from today, you're going to have the same issue, the recreational and medical side.
Thank you, counselor. I, I have to agree with you, because all the emails that I received so far was to do with the medical marijuana. So, I agree there. Anybody else from council? Counselor Bondi, you're the last one to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's imperative that we recognize that we have two newly-elected council members, and this is their first meeting, and they both, two of them over there, we have a, well, two have said that they're not comfortable. We have one recycler over here, and one's got a lot of experience reporting, but that, to me, says that we put the brakes on it. Because what's going to happen tonight is the media's going to report out, Essex Council opts out, and some of our council reps are going to go get groceries, and they're going to get attacked and say, "You opted out. I didn't even know about it." So I think to, to protect those council members and to protect all of us, because when Counselor Rogers was on council, we sent a letter to the province saying, "We want stores." So now we're doing this, you know, this, this big flip-flop. So that's the message that I'm worried about. We have time over the holidays. We will be at restaurants in our municipality. We will be talking to our voters. Counselor Garen put on his Facebook today, and there's a really, and I know some people don't like Facebook, but it's actually really useful, and it communicates out a lot. He, there is a lot of good feedback on his Facebook, and I haven't even had a chance to read it, and I'm like the Facebook queen. So I am just saying, for the benefit of the rookies, the veteran is saying that I can see what's going to happen if we opt out tonight, and it won't exactly be pretty.
Yeah. And can, Rob, can you read the motion again, please?
There's a motion on Florida postponed 201847 to January 14th, 19, as moved by Counselor Bondi, seconded by Counselor Verbeek, and I believe Counselor Bondi asked for a recorded vote. Counselor Bondi, how do you vote on the motion? To postpone, to postpone to January 14th, yeah, yep. Counselor Vanderdolen?
Support.
Counselor Bowman?
Oppose.
Mayor Snively?
Oppose.
Deputy Mayor Maloche?
Oppose.
Counselor Garen?
Support.
Counselor Verbeek?
Support.
Counselor Bjorkman?
Opposed.
With a vote of four in support and four oppose, the motion does not carry.
Thank you, Rob. No. So we got to ask for another motion. Yeah. If council wants to make another motion, I'm eager to hear. Counselor Bjorkman?
I would like to speak to the report from administration. That's why I didn't want to postpone this entire issue right away. I want to have a conversation tonight about our, our feelings and where we are, what we've learned so far, and then I will not be opposed to pushing this back. But I don't think we should walk out of here tonight and not say a word about this very important issue. So I'd like to address the, the report that administration brought us.
So you're making that motion? Yeah, it's got to be a motion? Second or for that motion? Yeah, all in favor? Scarry. Okay. Are you going to speak on your report?
Through you, Your Worship. I do believe Rita has a good outline of her report that she can present to council and will be the basis for council discussion.
Rita, if you're all set.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm the planner here for the Town of Essex, for those of you who are new to council, and I'm glad that my first item to you is about cannabis. Been doing a lot of research on this in the last couple of weeks. I was one of the people who were sent to Toronto to attend that conference on, on this matter. We've had, you know, we've heard from the OPP, we've heard from the Windsor Essex County Health Unit, so my report and what I'm going to say is really to augment what they had to say. You know, we're administration, we're here to educate council on these matters as well, so you can always contact me, or contact Jeff, contact Kevin, they were also people who went to that conference in, in Toronto in November. We know we're always available to you. So, from the very get-go, I just, I want to emphasize that this report deals with recreational cannabis. This is cannabis that I can get without a doctor's license. This is not medicinal cannabis. As Eric from the Windsor Essex Health Unit noted, that model does, that did not change. The medicinal cannabis model did not change, but the retail cannabis model did. So it all started on October 17, 2018, when the federal government of Canada legalized recreational cannabis. The government of Ontario has committed to allowing private recreational cannabis retail stores throughout the province, beginning on April 1st, 2019. As of today, the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario, they're the agency that's going to be responsible for issuing these retail operator licenses and conducting any compliance and audit processes. They'll be accepting applications today, as of December 17th, and as you've heard just last week, we heard there's going to be a cap on the number of licenses that they're going to issue because of a supply issue with the cannabis retail store. So, the government of Ontario has established a regulatory framework through Ontario Regulation 46H/18, which you can all find online, that provides further clarity on how these stores will be licensed and regulated. So the report in front of you seeks to inform council of that regulatory framework concerning private cannabis retail stores in Ontario, and to advise of the options facing council as it relates to the decision to opt in or opt out with respect to cannabis retail stores in the Town of Essex. So to begin, recreational cannabis is a legal-controlled and regulated product, and it's to be treated like any other type of retail product in Ontario. In terms of licensing, the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario is the provincial regulator of private recreational cannabis in Ontario, and again, their responsibilities will include issuing a retail store authorization to a licensed retail operator, conducting compliance and audit processes, issuing a retail operator license after investigation, and issuing certain individuals a cannabis retail manager license. Following the public notice process, a cannabis retail store authorization may be issued by the AGCO unless the registrar finds it is not in the public interest. In the report, I spell out what those matters of public interest actually are, so protecting public health and safety, protecting youth and restricting their access to cannabis, and preventing illicit activities in relation to cannabis. Councillor Bjorkman, you had mentioned that if we develop this municipal cannabis policy statement, you know, one of the issues, say you don't want it too close to a park or a library, places where you find, you know, youth frequent. So with regards to that, we can, we can make that statement to the AGCO, but we have to link it to those three matters of public interest, and how, you know, putting a store in this location really impacts public health and safety, for example. So written submissions opposing a retail store authorization as not being in the public interest can only be made to the registrar by a resident of the municipality in which the proposed store is located, and the municipality representing the area in which the proposed store is located as well. Since we're lower tier, the county can also make those comments as well. In terms of how this affects bylaw-making authorities, such as yourselves, should council decide to allow private cannabis retail stores, they would not have the authority to pass or amend a bylaw that would distinguish between a use of land, building, or structure that includes the retail sale of cannabis and a use of land, building, or structure that does not include the sale of cannabis. So for example, you, you can't amend your zoning bylaw to say, okay, cannabis retail stores are permitted here, and the rest of these retail operations are permitted here. You can't make that distinction through your zoning bylaw, and like Eric noted, through, you know, the health unit, you can't impose any, any land use mechanisms to distinguish between regular retail stores and cannabis retail stores. You also do not have the authority to pass a bylaw providing for a system of business licenses respecting the sale of cannabis, holders of a license or authorization issued under the Cannabis License Act or cannabis retail store. So if you have a business licensing system, we currently do not at the Town of Essex, but if we did, you cannot have a separate licensing system for cannabis retail stores. You cannot bias these types of retail stores from any other. The Ontario Regulation does restrict a cannabis retail store from being located within a distance of 150 meters from a public school or most private schools, as defined under the Education Act, and under Appendix B of your report, you'll know a number of maps that indicate what that 150-meter buffer would be from some of our public and private schools in the Town of Essex. So the precise boundaries, though, will be determined by the AGCO in consultation with the Ontario Ministry of Education. So if they do receive an application for the Town of Essex, they'll consult with the Ministry of Education on that matter. A municipality, however, can adopt a greater distance, or sorry, we cannot adopt a greater distance from public or private schools. So it's 150 meters, and that's that. We do have a one-time window to opt out of hosting cannabis retailers within our boundaries. If we do decide to opt out of allowing retail cannabis stores, the Cannabis License Act requires us to pass a resolution to that effect by January 22nd, and no later than three business days following the passing of the resolution. So if you pass the resolution to opt out today, we have three business days to get that resolution to the AGCO registrar. If we don't make a decision by January 22nd, we automatically opt in. Okay? So it is important to reiterate that a municipality that decides to opt out may reverse its decision at any later date. Okay? So opt-out is reversible. However, a decision by a municipality to allow, opt-in cannabis retail stores is final, and we cannot reverse our decision at a later date. So that's very, very important to note. Many municipal programs are directly impacted by the provincial legislative framework governing the sale and use of cannabis. Bylaw enforcement is, policing is, we have land use conflicts, use of parks and other outdoor facilities, public health and possible nuisance from, from these stores. Appendix A in your report includes a chart outlining the benefits and implications of cannabis retail stores on municipal service and programs such as bylaw enforcement, emergency services, ambulance and fire, public health and safety, and of course, economic development. There's also a financial impact of opting in or opting out. So the province of Ontario is going to provide $40 million in funding over the next two years to assist municipalities with the implementation costs of recreational cannabis legalization. The province is going to distribute $15 million of the fund between all municipalities for the first payment in January, based on 2018 MPAC household numbers. A 50-50 split in household numbers between lower and upper-tier municipalities, and adjustments to provide at least $5,000 to each municipality. The Town of Essex will receive $11,382 for the first payment in 2018. The province will distribute the second payment, based on, again, those MPAC household numbers, to those municipalities that opt in to hosting private retail stores. If a municipality has opted out, though, it will receive a maximum second payment amount of $5,000, and that's it. Additionally, if a municipality opts out, and opts back in at a later date, that municipality will not be eligible for additional funding beyond the $5,000 second payment. The province is also considering setting aside a certain portion of the municipal funding for unforeseen circumstances, and priority would be given to municipalities that have not opted out, so for those who've decided to allow cannabis retail stores. Additionally, if Ontario's portion of the federal excise duty on recreational cannabis over the first two years of legalization exceeds $100 million, the province would provide 50% of the surplus only to municipalities that have not opted out as of January 22nd, 2019. So just as a summary, everybody's going to get some money, that first payment, but if you decide to opt out, you get a maximum of $5,000 after January, but if you decide to opt in, it'll be adjusted based on house, MPAC household numbers, and you may get some more if the excise duty exceeds $100 million. But being a lower tier, you also got to split that with the county. So that really impacts funding as well. Administration is recommending that council, at the present time, for now, opt out of allowing cannabis retail stores in the Town of Essex in order to allow for consultation with stakeholders and members of the public to facilitate the development of a municipal cannabis retail policy statement. So what is this statement all about? It's a statement that would be developed by administration in conjunction with public consultation and community stakeholders. So this is where we really want to get the public's input. We understand that making a decision without the public's input is us speaking on their behalf, without properly consulting them. We have that option, so when we speak of opting out, we're really saying opt out, but with a communication plan, so we can get more information. The policy is really going to assist us in guiding, in providing municipal feedback for AGCO consideration as it relates to pending future applications. So for example, you heard from the health unit. The health unit stated that, you know, they have an issue with density. How close should one retail store be from the other? This is information we're going to get from them, based on the communication plan we have, and that we can possibly implement any municipal cannabis policy statement, so that when we do get a possible license, we can say, "Well, it's really close to one that we already have, maybe you should reconsider the location of this, or reconsider this application." Councillor Bjorkman, again, you were asking about, you know, if it has any teeth. Again, the only thing that the regulation considers itself with, in terms of, you know, setbacks, is, is that 150 meter from the school, but a municipal policy is just another way to influence, you know, the AGCO, to get them to consider, you know, the voice of the community. If you look at the last appendix, it's Appendix C, you'll see that we've developed a timeline and communications plan for public and stakeholder consultation. Now councillor Verbeek, you were asking about how we're going to get that. Well, as of tomorrow, we have a survey that is going to go live. And, you know, going more in-depth, we plan on hosting two public consultation meetings, we plan on consulting with the stakeholders. Appendix D includes that list of stakeholders. Heard from the health unit, health unit recommends maybe waiting to adopt any municipal cannabis policy statement, or opting in to after April, just to see how it unfolds with other municipalities, considering these stores can't open until April 1st anyways. But that's, that's what we're recommending. We're recommending a timeout until we can consult the public. Again, you know, administration's available to answer any of your questions. I'm out of breath, so I'm going to pass it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. To council, any questions? To Rita? Deputy Mayor Maloche?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Rita. So, again, councillor Bjorkman had mentioned earlier something about a standalone, and I want to know as well your interpretation on what the ministry's trying to say. Is it a standalone building, or is it a standalone storefront selling only certain types of, those types of products is what they're talking about? So I need to know for sure. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you for reminding me. I was, I was going to address that question. I have the regulation in front of me, so for those who are curious, it's Section 9 of the Ontario Regulation, and the regulation says that the retail space where cannabis would be sold would have to be enclosed by walls separating it from any other commercial establishment or activity. So for example, you go to the Devonshire Mall, see all those separate stores. A cannabis retail store would be permitted in that, so long as it's completely enclosed, and so long as no one can enter from or pass through, you know, that establishment to get to somewhere else. So it has to be completely enclosed. You look at our downtown, those stores, they share a sidewall, it could be in our downtown, so long as it's a completely separate store.
Thank you.
From the, yeah. Miss Gw.
Any other questions from council? Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you for the report. I thought it was very important that we hear the report tonight before we leave for the next month, and give people an opportunity to understand what it is we're, we're dealing with. My concerns that I have with it is, is the timing. We want to get our, our feedback from our residents as much as administration does, but there's a cost for not making a decision by January 22nd. If we don't make the decision by then, there's the, and it's not a lot of money, you know, $12,000, $12,000 to me, I'd love to have $12,000, but as a town, and to help us police and help us to do policies and things, that's not a great deal of money. But there's another 12 that come after that, and then there's the potential for a share if, if the industry takes off the way they expect it to take off. It will only be shared with people who are opted in. If you opt out, even if you opt back in, those second payments are never coming to this town. So that's a real consideration to look at. The developing a municipal cannabis policy statement, when we look at the, at the timeline for when we want to do that, it's going to be finished before April 1st. This is going to be a legal product, this is going to be a legal entity, it's going to come to our town. So we need to take advantage of all the things, in my opinion, that we can take advantage of. I just read two, two articles, one in the London Free Press, one in the Hamilton, that the number of licenses are in this lottery, it's not going to be the whole province of Ontario, and they're going to pick out 25 names. There are licenses, a number of licenses targeted to the Toronto GTA. There's a number of licenses targeted to Western, Southern Ontario, and in the London Free Press, they reported that if you've got less than 50,000 people in your municipality, you won't even be considered. Now, I haven't read this coming out from the government's website yet, but we read something new every three or four days. So we need to give ourselves time to get the rest of that information, but it's very important, as we're looking at these things rolling out, the odds of Essex having a store here to start probably aren't good. But we still need to take advantage of any of the opportunities that may be coming to us. So if we're going to work on getting our, our cannabis policy statement, and work on our public consultations, and work on all these things, we will have all of that done before the first store ever opens up, opting in or opting out. So it's important for us to go to our public now and say, "What, what is it you're looking for? What is the best fit for our town?" It's going to come. Are we going to go ahead and try to take advantage of some of the bonuses that are coming from the government, or are we going to hold back and wait and, and, you know, make sure that all of our ducks are in a row before the first store comes out? There's a lot to talk about. I've been reading all kinds of things, I've got lots of notes, but basically, to me, that's, that's the question, is do we want to take advantage of a possible support from the provincial government for something that we are going to do anyway? I would have to say that comes back to me more. The other thing we talk about a lot here is smoking marijuana. There's going to be a lot more chewing and, and oils and things than there's going to be smoking. It's a huge part of, of what's coming, and we need to address that. There's a, there's this, you know, we don't want to normalize any kind of smoking, I understand that, but we need to enforce our rules and our laws, where you can smoke, where you can't smoke, keep it away from our kids, but there's much more to it than just that smoking component. So I'm glad we were able to have the presentation, and I hope other people have things to say to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else from council? Councillor Garan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I don't see the need to, to do anything tonight. We got a lot of good information tonight. I think in the next couple, three weeks, even with the holidays, I can get a lot more information that I would like to get from my residents in my ward, and I'd rather do that than make a harsh decision tonight, you know, just to opt out or opt in or whatever, to, to put this off till the 14th. I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we have a pending question. We have a motion to receive a move 201847, so if it was the wish of council, a motion to postpone again would, would be the option.
So councillor Garan, if you want to make that motion, you can make that motion, unless there's anybody else wants to talk to the issue? No? Councillor Van Endel.
As much as I'm in favor of listening to more people, if we leave it till the 14th, that leaves us almost no wiggle room, and there's no, if, there's no time to react to it. It's like, then we're right on, right on the gun. But if we start it- But if we started it tonight, I think we'd have more time to talk about it. Even if we do continue to have, to accept more input from our voters, can't we further the discussion tonight to see where we're all leaning? Because we might surprise some of us.
Thank you. Anybody else from counsel?
So I'm going to ask, I'll make a motion. So through you, Mr. Chair, I show move by Counselor Bjorkman, seconded by Bondi, to receive a move 201847. That's the pending question before counsel at the moment.
To receive it. All in favor of receiving? Oh, pardon me? Just to receive it? Who made the motion? Yeah. Just to receive the report? Yep. That's not a motion. Yeah, that's done. We voted on it. We already voted on it. Receive it. No? Okay. All in favor of just receiving the report? Yep. Receiving the report. Is that it?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we discuss, we discuss it January 14th.
Seconder for Counselor Bondi? Counselor Bjorkman? To further discuss it, that's the motion.
So through you, Mr. Chair, the motion on the floor would be to bring, report 201847 that's been received, to bring it back to the January 14th meeting?
Yes. And Counselor Bjorkman seconded it. Okay. All in favor of that motion? Oh, no question? Counselor Goleman?
What's the ramifications for the staff with regard to what the decision is on the 14th? If we move to proceed, to opt in, or if we move to opt out? And I guess what I'm looking for is to give counsel direction to, if the option was to move in, should they be moving at, looking at options to move that way and, you know, to give them a little advance notice? Even if we moved to not, at least they've done some groundwork ahead of time.
Counselor Bjorkman?
Just to that, the response from administration, they've got three days to send in the notice that we've decided one way or the other, and that's plenty of time before time runs out.
Yeah.
Between the 17th and the 20th.
I would agree, I would agree with that, Counselor. So we had a motion on the floor from Counselor, yeah, hold on, RCA would like to speak on the issue.
Through you, Your Worship. I think if we had just right now some direction from counsel that we can go ahead with this survey, get it out there and try and get as much as we can before the 14th, I think that would be something that would be helpful at this stage.
Counselor Bondi, would you like to add that to your motion?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And the seconders, okay with that? All in favor of the motion? It's carried. Thank you.
6.2 on the agenda as presentation is Suzanne Allison, Raymond Gould, and Bruce Tribute, looking to speak before counsel tonight on the park bench in Heritage Gardens.
Okay, your mic's on all right.
Okay, we're good. Good evening, Mayor Snively and counsel. Thank you very much for allowing us to be delegates tonight. First of all, we wish to congratulate all of you on your recent election and reelection for this new term of council. My name is Suzanne Allison. Seated next to me, to the far right, is Raymond Gould, and to my immediate right, Bruce Tribute. The conversation today or the request today is about the Bill Gould Memorial Park Bench. Ray Gould, to my far right, is the younger brother of Bill Gould. Ray is a veteran and has served in the Royal Canadian Air Force and Army and Navy. Bruce Tribute, to my right, is a longtime friend of Bill Gould. Bruce is a veteran of the Windsor Regiment and is also a sergeant-at-arms at Royal Canadian Legion Branch 255 in Windsor. I am here speaking on behalf of Fierce Metal Works as their marketing and sales representative, and we have been asked to fabricate the previously mentioned memorial, Memorial Park Bench. I am also past chair of the former Essex Memorial Spitfire Committee, for those who don't know. Our request tonight is two requests, fairly easy, I think. Our first request is to accept the steel, a built steel Memorial Park Bench from the family and friends of Bill Gould. This is going to be a donation to the town. The family is requesting, family and friends are requesting that the new Memorial Park Bench be placed in Heritage Gardens to the right front of the Essex Memorial Spitfire as per the handout that I hope every one of you have now with the pictures in front of you. The bench will be personalized with Bill's name, his birth and death date, and a phrase from the poem "High Flight." The second request is to ask the town to donate installing the cement slab with the rebar underneath and to install it for us. The bench will be six feet long, 28 inches wide, and 30 inches high. It will be very strong and powder coated as well, so we never have to worry about rust or decay. For those who are interested, Fierce Metal Works is also donating a portion of the costs related to the fabrication of the bench. A little bit of a background on veteran Bill Gould. Bill, or William Gould, is an RCA F veteran as well. His name is up on the honor wall. Bill Gould is the son of William Lawrence and Kathleen Ellen Gould. Bill is the second eldest of 11 children. So he is the brother of Yvonne, Carl, Gloria, Joyce, Ralph, Alvin, Ray, Kay, Deanna, and Karen. That's a big family you have. Bill served for three years during World War II in the Royal Canadian Air Force. He married Rosemary John before the war started, and together they raised their family with their children, Dan, Billy, and Judy, at their home in Maidstone. Bill's wife, Rosemary, passed away in 2007, and Bill passed away in 2015. The request to us was it was important to have the Gould family, or the Gould family requested, to have the bench located at the Spitfire because it was also near Branch, Essex Branch, Royal Canadian Branch 201, as well as being near the memorial, which was really important for the family. Bill was a 62-year member of the Royal Canadian Legion. So the Legion members actually know a lot about this as well. We're hoping to have approval tonight, if at all possible, so that Fierce Metal Works can start building the bench immediately and have it ready for installation in early February. Thank you very much for your time. All three of us are available to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. To counsel, any questions from counsel? And I'll turn this over to Doug Sweet first, if you want to comment on, please.
Through your worship, thanks for the presentation. Just for counsel, some may be aware, some may not, the town does have a memorial bench program already. Part of that program, the bench includes the pad. The town purchased a bench, you've seen through the town, and part of that is to install the bench. So the town in the past has not put the bench in on its own. It's been part of the donation. So if counsel wishes to go with a pad recommendation too, I think it was, that'd be different than what we've done with the other memorial bench program. So it's something you'd have to discuss. Also, last year, we had a similar situation at Harrow, which is a different bench. If counsel is moving forward with this, we would recommend that we, the town, seize the bench first as a concept, just make sure it meets our standards. So that'd be another request or recommendation I would have for counsel. Oh, and sorry, and the last thing, I know the recommendation was early February. Because of concrete, that may not be the case. If counsel approves it, I would say early spring.
To counsel, any questions from counsel? Counselor Bjorkman?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the things you've been involved with in the park there. Over to Mr. Sweet's point there. So we have a donation plan, a regular plan program. So it's, and it's $1,500, covers the bench, the installation, maintenance, and plaque. So the bench itself, you're obviously supplying. So to counsel, I would say, you know, we have had other benches done in the town. We have memorial benches, and that's the program they've gone through. So I think if we took out the costs of the bench, we're obviously not going to need to do that. But that is the normal way that we go about doing our bench entry programs. That's the costs that are inclined with it. So I think it is important that, you know, administration have a look at the bench design, and, you know, the ones that are over there are beautiful. I have no doubt this one will be as well. But I think with all of our memorial programs, that installation is all part of the cost as well as long-term maintenance. So I'm in favor of having the bench, and I'm honored to have your family there. But I think we need to go buy our programs. It's something that we've already established.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rubik, you had your...
I just wanted to say thanks. Thank you for coming to the delegation. But just when I was reading my agenda, I was moved because I too come from a very large Maidstone family, and my dad was great friends with Mr. Gould. So I was really pleased to see that you're seeking to put a tribute up for him.
If I may, one question to Mr. Sweet. Do we have any problems with the location with regard to the right-of-way of the old CN lines?
Through your worship, I think everybody received the map. Ms. Allison, hand it out. Or no? Yes? Okay. So based on what's highlighted in yellow, I'd want to go more, that location proximity is correct. We just want to make sure we say on town lands and not the sandlands. So it may have to go a little bit more towards a sidewalk, but the general proximity, it's a good spot.
Okay, that's the only concern I had. And again, thank you for the donation.
Counselor Van Nilo?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks very much for the presentation and delegation. I never met Mr. Gould, but I'd read about him certainly. So I thanked the family for all the military service they've done for the country. But through the chair, Mr. Sweet, this map makes this bench look like it's the first of a number of benches in an arc. Is that the case?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, there are two benches, one on each side, kind of the Spitfire currently. And this now would be kind of facing the memorial. So we'd probably at most put one more bench in there at the most, just because of other events that happened there. We don't want to just have all benches. We want to make sure there's enough green space still.
And just for future reference, how much do these bases cost? And how much do we, how many of them do we do a year?
Through your worship, depending on the time of season, but last year, for example, we did four memorial benches. Taking the bench out, the pad will range between $400 to $600, so on average, $500.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I'm hearing is that we've got a beautiful bench being donated, but it may not fit into our bench program. Right? Like, it's a private bench. And we have a bench program, it's a private bench. So what I would want to say, it's kind of a one-off situation. We don't get a lot of benches coming to us, not through the program. Typically, people go through the program. This, I wholeheartedly support because Fierce Metal Works and the Spitfire Committee went, volunteered, and put this Spitfire up, and they really put us on the map in Essex. If we were to say, oh, your bench doesn't match our bench program, I feel like that would be, for use of better words, a slap in their face. Right? We have to, like, I'm endorsing this wholeheartedly. I hope that counsel does. If we're get, if we have a hard time about the $500, I'll throw in $50. We can fundraise $500 to get that metal, I mean, that cement slab. Because this, that committee and that group put that, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have that Spitfire there. So even if their bench isn't exactly our memorial benches, it's still going to be a beautiful bench. I have no doubt that it'll be a nice bench for that area. So I'm prepared to make a motion when everybody is done, saying that administration work with the group to install the bench. I understand us wanting to see the bench to make sure it kind of fits and, you know, it's not something crazy and spikes sticking out, who knows? Right? So when the time is right, you know, who knows? You know, we never know, right? I am prepared to make a motion when the time is right, that administration work with the group to install the bench.
Thank you, Counselor Bondi. Anybody else on counsel? So, Deputy Mayor Maloche?
Thank you through you, Your Worship. And I agree too, the committee's done a lot of good work, but it doesn't prohibit them from the rules that we've set in place. We've got to treat everyone alike, and there's a lot of good people that have done a lot of good things in the town. So I'm not for the town paying for the base. And again, as Counselor Bondi has said, I'm more than willing to put some money in as well as a donation. But I think it should be done the way we've done other benches. So, but I think it's fantastic. Thank you so much for bringing this forward, and it's going to be a nice addition there, for sure.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Garen, did you, did you have any, anyone else on counsel? Counselor Bondi, if you want to make your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the town work with the committee to install a cement pad for the bench proposed and cover all the costs of the cement pad.
Do we have a seconder for that motion? No seconder for the motion? Veto. Once again, I'm going to ask if we can receive the report or the presentation? Counselor Rubik?
Support.
Support. All in favor? Thank you. Very much for your presentation, and myself, I will donate to the cost too. So, yep.
Mr. Mayor, should we then have a motion that we are, we will allow them to put a bench there, but we will donate it?
I would say yes. You need that motion.
Okay. Then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the committee to put their bench there and we fundraise, or they fundraise for the costs of the cement pad.
Seconder for the motion? Counselor Garen? All in favor? It's carried.
Item 7.1 on the agenda as unfinished business is planning report 201844. This report was tabled at the November 19, 2018 meeting, tabled to be brought to this evening's meeting. Since the time that that report was tabled, administration has revised and provided an updated report on the same subject matter, which is 201850 before you this evening. So through you, Mr. Chair, procedurally, the first order of business in order to be able to bring this subject matter and discuss it, is planning report 201844 needs to be taken from the table. And because there's now, before counsel, an updated or revised report in the way of 201850, the recommendation is for the old November 19, 201844 report to be taken from the table, be filed administratively, and now substituted with new planning report 201850.
Move from the table?
All in favor of removing?
So now, through you, Mr. Chair, we have planning report 201850, together with bylaw 1751 before counsel. We have two delegations this evening concerning this report and bylaw before counsel. The first delegation is Brad and Alice Laporte. The first delegation is Brad and Alice Laporte.
Thank you, Brad. Anytime you want to start.
Just, oh, sorry, sorry. There may have been some confusion on whether I'm for or against this zoning change. I am definitely against it. For the council people that weren't here for the other meetings, I'll just go over what I've said before. I bought this lot 20 years ago. I had a choice of both lots at the time that I bought my lot. I didn't buy Mr. Abraham's lot because I didn't really want to be beside commercial property. Saying that, I've had two real estate agents come out and look at what was going to go there according to the site plan. Mike Tomek, I think you have a letter from him saying it will have negative effect to my property value. Tim McDonald said the same thing, but he didn't give me anything in writing as pertaining to that. Mr. Abraham, as we've talked, he got a hold of...
Brad, can you just...
Sorry. Mr. Abraham got ahold of me and wanted to see if there was anything that we could come to agreement with about site plan. And I was, you know, if council said, and my position was, if council votes yes for this, I was just trying to have some of my thoughts and opinions go into the site plan. So me and Mr. Abraham talked. He sent me a letter with the stuff we talked about, which is pretty well what's on my delegation form. But when I got this, when he emailed me this letter, at the top of the letter, it implied that I was actually for the rezoning of this property and that way. But so, I never signed this letter. And we have talked, it must, it was a misunderstanding maybe on my part, I don't know, but I'm not for the rezoning of this property. I think there's enough property zoned commercial in the town apparel that we don't need to start rezoning residential property to commercial. If council has any questions for me, I can answer them or...
Thank you, Brad. Any questions from council? No. No, no question. Thank you, Brad, for the presentation. A motion to receive that? Seconder by Deputy Mayor Malash. All in favor? It's carried. Yeah, she made the motion.
Our second delegation this evening is Dr. Max Abraham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this rezoning again. I'm very thankful to council with the whole process, having the opportunity to, with the previous council, discuss, have two public meetings, as well as the previous council meeting, to get a lot of feedback about some of the concerns about the rezoning. Almost most importantly, the Laporte families, as they're probably going to be the most affected by it, as they are right next door to the property. Speaking to that first, so yes, we did reach out to the Laportes, and when their delegation report that they sent to council, there is a list of recommendations they have for site plan control if council approves the zoning change, and we agree with all of them. So in our letter that we sent, everything about the setback of the property, the location of the driveway, building location, it being a single-story building, being considered of the residential area, so having a sloped roof, all those things that the Laportes would be concerned about if this goes through, we want to address. And we're really hoping that council, even at this stage during the rezoning, can include any of those that they feel would be important to the residential neighbors, to keep the character of the area. That being said, some of the other concerns that were brought up by other neighbors in that area had more to do with competition with other providers in town, specifically pharmacy, dental office, and chiropractors. So we're really happy with this new recommendation from administration that removes the pharmacy use, removes the chiropractor use, as well as the general dental office. And all that really leaves is a very narrow and specific medical use for it. So there's no room really for any retail. And really, it's our intention in the development to really have services there, increase the access of services to Harrow residents that only complement the Harrow Health Team. So these are providers that require referral from the physicians and the Harrow Health Team to use their services. One of those would be radiology and any other diagnostic imaging. So we do have a signed letter of intent after a direction from council or previous meetings from them showing their intent to be on that property. They were so in support of it, they also signed a first letter of refusal, giving them pretty much the sole opportunity to run any type of radiology clinic on that property. So we do have a plan for it that caters specifically to the family health team that's there with those services in mind. And then the other concern was that there is a, other properties in Harrow that are zoned commercial. Now, some of the things that came up during the public meeting really go to the fact that none of these properties are available for sale or have any development potential in the pipeline. And secondly, for what we are hoping to bring in, the services that we're hoping to add to Harrow as new services would not locate in any of those areas. The whole point is for it to be in direct access to the patients of the family health team. So what this does, it gives the current and future residents of Harrow and other surrounding municipalities the ability to access these services while seeing their family doctors or their family physicians, and they're going to be in direct proximity with these other services that they have been referred to, without the need to drive around, get in the car, park, where some other residents had concerns of taking their parents or their relatives to Windsor or outside other municipalities. So in summary, we've, we felt like that we've addressed all the concerns that really have been put for us very thoroughly, and we really hope that council considers this rezoning. And if they have any specific questions for me, I know this is the first time for a lot of the counselors to look at this file and everything, and if there's any questions about me that they still have, I would love the opportunity to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. To council, any questions from council? To Dr. Ingram. No questions? Counselor Beartman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks again for coming out and talking to us, and to the Laportes as well for their side. I've been pretty steadfast in the thought that this is a residential property. We're trying not to expand in areas that we don't have already designated. And I've made the point about the Colovino lands that need to have the first of our medical and service areas developed over there. Back to the residence concern, when you buy a house in a residential area and you expect to be surrounded by residences, I think that's a reasonable expectation when you go out and buy property. We talk about not, I mean, it's very difficult to compare this to sprawl. We are next to another property that's commercial, but the reason for buying the property he bought was it's not next to a commercial property. I appreciate your list of things that you're showing here to ensure as little, I don't, damage to, damage is not the right word. You're not causing damage to anybody. So I had to stop to find a word. But I appreciate trying to mitigate how you will be influencing those properties as well as with the people across the street. However, I'm going to continue to say that we have properties that are zoned for commercial and medical, and this particular zoning is in a residential area with an expectation by the person who bought that home to be in a residential area. So in that case, I won't, I won't be supporting this venture.
Thank you, Counselor Verbeek.
Okay. And thank you to both delegations that were here tonight. I just want to say, in the early, in 1986, I bought a home in a residential area that I expected would remain a residential area. Early '90s, I was part of a "not in my backyard" group. You may have heard of them, the CIA, Colchester in Action. None of us residents wanted the regional landfill to land up in our backside and front yards. Fortunately, Carl Davidson, the mayor of the day, and his council saw different. They were able to see the bigger picture and the benefit to all the residents in this municipality, and so they plunked down the regional landfill in my front yard. We've learned to live with it, and to be honest, it's not a horrible neighbor. But I'm just saying, so I can't, I can never get on the side of "not in my backyard" without that, you know, being my history. And we must consider the residents of Harrow when we're looking at this application to rezone, because they would benefit incredibly by having more medical-type services, just as we did when they finally came to Essex. I'm a caregiver to a lot of people, an aging family, and I still remain a foster parent. When imaging and blood work and all that came available to us here in Essex, it changed my ability to provide care for my family. The Harrowwood population, as we all know, turns over, right? It's a seniors area there. Providing these services close to them is not just going to give a little bit of independence or prolong their independence for the residents that currently live there, but that will in all the years to come. Anyway, those are some of my thoughts looking at this. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor.
I've been sort of dwelling in this for a while, and I think it does fit the area, provided the site plan process follows through and addresses many of the issues that they have, and I think that that process is working. So I think if done correctly, I think it will make a proper buffer between the medical area and the residential area. So I'm supportive of it.
Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't see the Colovino lands as being a good fit with what you're proposing, unfortunately, because we do have lands in Harrow that are vacant that we could develop on, but it's about looking for a fit. And there's other lands in Harrow, like McCaffey Street, that are zoned, but they're not for sale. So I see one of two things happening. I see us giving the green light for development, or I see us having another vacant residential property for who knows how long. We all know the trend is for smaller lots. This is a really hard lot to build on because not everybody wants a lot of property. I'm extremely sympathetic to the Laportes. Like, it's, I am. Like, it's, it is a hard decision. But we are elected to do what is best for the community, and that is what brings me down. I mean, I would probably get ousted if I went into, you know, into Harrow and said, you know, I'm not, I don't want to see development right now. This vote tonight is signifying a message that this council is either sending out, "We're open, we're open, we're open," which we've been working so hard, our staff, our last term of council, to say, "We're open, we're open, we're open." So I want to give the message that we are open. I don't, I don't, I would love for a big, beautiful house to go next to you, but that hasn't happened. So, and I can't afford to do that. So my responsibility is to do what is best for our community at large. The residents of Harrow have spoke loud and clear that they want to see those signals. They want to see us move forward. So that's where, that's where I will be tonight. I will be supporting it, and I think that we can control a lot through site plan control. Look at the Harrow shoppers. It's beautiful. We did a lot of site plan control there. We met the residents more than halfway with the Colovino property, the Fournier House. We did a lot of beautiful work there. So I think that we can do beautiful work if we all get together and try to embrace it. And, you know, let's hope that Harrow flourishes and your property value doesn't go down, it goes up. Like, I'm sympathetic to everybody that has a "not in my backyard" because those stories are becoming more and more popular, but we need to break through that bubble and we need to grow. So that's why I will be supporting it. And I just, Mr. Mayor, can we have a recorded vote on that too, please?
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Malash.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I too was bouncing back and forth on this one. But again, something that Counselor Verbeek's mentioned, when you look at the greater good of the community. I know I have aging parents that live in the town of Essex, and I too see the benefits for them and a lot of older persons that I know in town here that don't want to drive into Windsor or another community to have their blood work done or have their imaging done. This would be a great benefit to those that already live in Harrow. It would be a great mirroring of what services are needed to help out the Harrow Health Team to survive and move forward in what they want to do. I too feel bad for the Laportes and other neighbors there that didn't want to see it. What I didn't want to see and what I didn't want to have happen is make this a property where what Dr. Abraham was mentioning wouldn't actually go in there. Those services were not going to go in there, and something else would go in there and we'd have high traffic happening. And that's what I wanted to avoid, the high trafficking. But with this letter of intent, I believe that he's being true to his word, and as mentioned by other counselors too, you can do a lot with site control plan. And some of the things that were mentioned in here, there's even other things that you can do that would make it a much more viable situation for the neighbors there. So I'm going to be in favor of rezoning this as well. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Abraham, what kind of a timetable do you foresee building?
I know for ESR, they're looking at fourth quarter of 2019, if anything. So the whole process is to get the license from the ministry for the radiology and whatnot. And pretty much everything's just on pause until kind of we cross our Ts and dot our Is in terms of the rezoning and that this is actually a possibility before they invest anymore in, I guess, exploring this option. In terms of following up to your comments before about other properties in Harrow, in terms of ESR and other radiology private practices that set up in scenarios like this, this is really a this-or-nothing type situation. The only locations they want to be is directly beside the most number of physicians. And Harrow was very fortunate to have the foresight from many years ago to have a Harrow Health Team in place, a whole system in place that's funded by the government. Those patients have access to services that people that are under the old fee-for-model scenario may not actually have. So with that service there, this is the situation that they want to be in, and if it's not this, they move on to the other. Every other family health team in other municipalities in Windsor, Essex have a whole hub of services centered around the family health team, such as in Kingsville, Leamington, Chatham. Everything's right there for them.
Okay. And just further to that, and you are committed to your list of seven items here to what, when you did speak with the Laportes, those items there, you're going to hold yourself to as far as the building and the setbacks and the...
It's my position, and this is up to legal or administration, if those things on that list can be added today or attached to this zoning bylaw, so that whatever happens in the future with this property, those items are tied with this property. the future with this property, those items are tied with this property forever. If anybody ever, any type of medical, commercial development goes there, I'm in support of that. We have no issues with any of those seven items, whether it's now, later, site plan control. As a good neighbor, I would love for as many of those things to be included now for the peace of mind from the Laports that whatever happens in the next year, two years, three years, they're not holding their breath, waiting for that phone call from the administration saying, "We have a site plan, let's review it." They know in the back of their mind that their concerns are addressed. Council took the steps to implement them and support them, and I think it's probably as best of a compromise that we could all get. You know, we're restricting our ability to rent out the property by eliminating the uses of the pharmacy, general dental office, and a chiropractor. So, we're just hoping that with the compromises we've made, compromises they're making, we could reach a conclusion that makes everyone happy for the better of the community to access more services.
Thank you. Counselor, I'm going to ask for a motion, and then, because you already spoke one. Go ahead, Counselor Verbeek, make it short.
I just realized I hadn't stated when I made my remarks that I would be supporting, but I just want to say, I agree about sending out a message tonight that Essex is open to development, but I also, I'm concerned that one of the largest arguments against this is that there are other sites that are zoned in the Harrow area, but they're not necessarily for sale. And how much longer should the residents of Harrow have to wait for these important services that the doctor wants to bring to them now? Anyway, that's all. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. If Counselor wants to make a motion, Counselor Verbeek, you'd like to make the motion? Can you state your motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we support the request to rezone the site.
Seconder, the motion.
Through. On a recorded vote. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification, is the stated motion to receive the report and the presentation and to give three ratings to 1759 to amend 1037?
Okay. Okay. Sorry, seconder? His seconder is... Oh, question on a motion?
Does that include these...
Right. Through the chair, this is just to amend 1037 to allow for the zoning. I don't know if a site plan agreement has come to council yet.
If I can go to Rita, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The bylaw that's before you, that's just to amend the zoning bylaw to permit those additional uses, the medical office, excluding, you know, the general dentist and chiropractor and pharmacy. Once that goes through a formal appeal process, there's 20 days that they have to wait if council adopts it and that's all clear, and Dr. Abraham and the ESR want to develop the property, then that's when we will go through site plan control.
Just to, thank you, Rita, just to that. So, all those conditions would be in there then? That's what you're saying?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
In the site plan agreement?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, they would be addressed during site plan. I know one of the counselors, can't remember who, mentioned that if we can put them in the bylaw, we can, but I'd have to bring forward an amended bylaw to you for the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions before we go to the vote? We had a motion. Yeah, we had the motion. It's a recorded vote. Deputy Mayor Maloche, how do you vote?
Oh, sorry. Through you, Mr. Chair. As moved by Counselor Verbeek, seconded by Bondi, the motion is to receive the report 201850, receive the presentation, and give three ratings to bylaw 1759, which is the bylaw to amend 1037. On that motion, Counselor Bondi, how do you vote?
Oh, my apologies. No, it was requested by Counselor Bondi, yes.
I can't. I have to go in and take the order. Counselor Bowman?
Support.
Support. Mayor Snively?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Maloche?
Support.
Counselor Garren?
Support.
Counselor Verbeek?
Support.
And Counselor Bjorkman?
Opposed.
With a recorded vote of five in favor and two opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Doctor.
Oh, I got you.
I got it.
Okay. 8.1, under Reports for Administration, is Chief Administrative Officer, 2018-06, re-council remuneration 2019, for receipt, and that council approved the increase noted in said report effective January 1st, in order to compensate for the elimination of the one-third tax exemption previously available to elected officials, municipal elected officials.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to our CEO, Ms. Hunter. So, I'm just wondering, on the tax rate, what tax rate that you actually used?
Through you, worship. We did a breakdown of each council member and each and the deputy mayor and the mayor of the day to give us a rough estimate of what that tax amount would be. I mean, we can relook at this once we have the new council members in place, but at the time, that's what we had available to us, so we use that as the base for our information. So, for example, for yourself, for your position, it was based on your actual income tax rate that we calculate for your pay.
Okay, great. Thank you. When I ask... All in favor? Carrie.
8.2, Community Services, 2018-35, re-Heritage Essex lease renewal to operate the Essex Railway Station. And this is together with authorizing bylaw 1767 to authorize an execution of an agreement between the town and Heritage Essex for receipt. That council approved renewing the said lease to operate the station for an additional five years beginning in January 1st, and that bylaw 1767 received three ratings this evening.
Counselor Bjorkman, seconder. Counselor Maloche, any questions? All in favor?
8.4, Fire Report, 2018-8, re-fire department radio system update and lease agreement extension for receipt, and that council approved extending the lease agreement with Calcom Radio Company Limited for an additional two years, as per the conditions in the agreement.
Need a motion? Counselor Bowman, seconder. Counselor Bondi, any questions? All in favor?
8.5, Building Department, 2018-11, re-November 2018 building report, providing an update on building activity for receipt.
Deputy Mayor Maloche, second by Counselor Benandall. All in favor, or questions on that? All in favor? Carrie.
8.6, Corporate Services, 2018-14, re-extension agreement, and this is together with authorizing bylaw 1762 for receipt, and that 1762 received three ratings.
Counselor Benandall and Counselor Bjorkman, any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
8.7, Corporate Services, 2018-15, re-extension agreement, once again, together with bylaw 1763 for receipt and with three ratings to bylaw 1763.
Need a motion? Deputy Mayor Maloche, second by Counselor Garren. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
8.8, Corporate Services, 2018-16, re-2019 water and sanitary sewer rates, and this is together with bylaw 1764 for receipt, and that bylaw 1764 received three ratings.
Counselor Bowman, seconder. Counselor Verbeek, any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
8.7, Corporate Services, 2018-15, re-extension agreement, once again, together with bylaw 1763 for receipt and with three ratings to bylaw 1763.
Need a motion? Deputy Mayor Maloche, second by Counselor Garren. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
8.8, Corporate Services, 2018-16, re-2019 water and sanitary sewer rates, and this is together with bylaw 1764 for receipt, and that bylaw 1764 received three ratings.
Counselor Bowman, seconder. Counselor Verbeek, any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
8.8, Corporate Services, 2018-16, re-2019 water and sanitary sewer rates, and this is together with bylaw 1764 for receipt, and that bylaw 1764 received three ratings.
Counselor Bowman, seconder. Counselor Verbeek, any questions on this one? All in favor?
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Just a quick question through you, Mr. Mayor. Just through to our head of finance, Jeffrey Morrison, just on the campaign trail, I heard that we have really high water and wastewater rates, and I know we kind of do, but I know that there's a reason for it, like it's built into our life cycling and asset management plan. Could you just give a little snippet about this so that it's covered by somebody else, not by me?
Sure. Through the chair. So, I was looking at the numbers that were in here and that the increases in Ward 3 and 4 that you had just mentioned, specifically Ward 4 or Ward 3. So, they're related to the consumption. So, the consumption in that area, when the model was originally built, the prior model in 2005, the consumption amounts were higher. In 2015, when the wastewater rate study was done, the consumption amounts were overstated from the prior, so they were reduced. So, the consumption is lower. So, because of that consumption being lower, the rates were a little bit higher. And that is related to the life cycling of the assets, and it's sound asset management to ensure that we have the money put away to replace those assets when they can do. So, you're welcome.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie.
8.9, Corporate Services, 2018-18, revise schedules to bylaws 1186, 1331, and 1344 for receipt, and that council approve revisions to the following schedules: Schedule C to bylaw 1186, Schedule A to 1331, and Schedule B to 1344, for three ratings this evening. Sorry, just for receipt.
Counselor Bjorkman, seconder. Counselor Garren, any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
8.10, Drainage, 2018-09, appointment of an engineer to install a new access covert in the Thompson Drain for receipt, and that council appoint road engineering to develop the access covert installation report for the Thompson Drain.
Counselor Bondi, seconder. Counselor Bjorkman, any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie.
8.11, Infrastructure and Development, 2018-19, snowplow mailbox damage policy for receipt, and that council direct administration to complete a policy in accordance with this report and bring back to council for future approval.
Counselor Verbeek and Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one?
Thank you. Through, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make some comments here. Being the victim of a mailbox knocked down, I can tell you, it can be very frustrating. So, mine was not with the town of Essex, it was actually with the county of Essex. And my wife actually seen them knock the mailbox down with, I mean, you can't tell when they're going by, because there's so much snow being flung in a big storm. But, we had a six-by-six post, and it was snapped off. And there were marks, all kinds of marks on the post. At the time, we just had a wood post. We didn't have anything covering the post, and it was buried pretty good in the ground. So, it was snapped off. And going through the process, and I don't want to get into the details of this, but sometimes it's hard to prove who's at fault. Drivers do not want to say that they actually hit your post. Once the post is damaged like that, it's very difficult to tell. And if we come back and tell the resident, "Oh, it's not our fault," what, and they believe it is, and who's going to be the go-between to try and determine whose fault it was? The other thing is, too, is that if we just pay for the mailbox, so somebody's taken out my mailbox, it's January, because that's when the snow has hit. It's very cold outside. And let's say I'm 20 years older. Let's say, I'm not going to tell you my, no, I'm not going to tell you my age. I'll soon be 60 in the spring, so let's say 20 years and three months from now, I'm going to be 80, and my pole, my mailbox gets knocked off. We know that as we get older, these small things in life cause a lot more complication to us. It's the simple things, everyday things that we're used to, getting our mail every day at our mailbox, that cause a lot of frustration. So, my mailbox gets knocked off, and the town decides, "We're going to give you $150. You can go buy a new two-by-four and a new mailbox. Here's your $100. It's not our fault." Or, "If it's not our fault, they're not going to give me anything, and I got to try and prove that it's their fault." If I get $150 for my mailbox and my post, and I'm responsible for putting it in, it's going to cost me $200 to have it put in, and I haven't even done anything wrong. I had a mailbox there. The truck hit it. I got to try and prove that they hit it. Or, and if I put it in, then it's too late. They're going to say, "Well, you already put it in. What's the concern?" And they give you $150 for the mailbox. I just think that we should be paying to put it in as well, because if we admit fault that we knocked the mailbox down, I'm not going to expect an 80-year-old man or even a 60-year-old man to go out there and have to dig a hole and put this in. It's nothing, it's no fault of the person that had the mailbox knocked down. I think we should be replacing it at full cost. We can even have our roads crew go out there and possibly, it doesn't happen that often. Does happen that often? Oh. But, I think there's got to be some kind of negotiating tool here that says, you know, like gives the resident an opportunity to say, "Hey, look it. That pole was in there solid, and there's no way the snow's going to snap that pole in half." At what level of snow and, you know, like, I can see under certain circumstances that maybe it was the snow, heavy ice snow, but it doesn't happen that often in this area. So, is it going to be, are we going to use that as an excuse so that we don't have to give them the money for their mailbox? And if we do end up giving them the money for their mailbox and post, then they still have to go out and they still have to fix it and pay somebody to put the new post in. That's my concern. I just don't think it's fair. So, maybe you'd like to hear back from the administration on why they think this is fair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Verbeek.
Just to further why I agree with everything that Deputy Mayor Maloche said, I, too, was one of those victims. I saw the snowplow hit the mailbox, and I saw my mailbox fly into my neighbor's yard. However, my post was a steel post, and it was sunk, and when the blade hit it, it toppled the pole to an angle enough that when town did drop off my new mailbox, they did come out shortly after I made the phone call and left a mailbox with one of my teenagers. We still had to wait till the spring, till Steve could borrow the neighbor's tractor, pull the post up, sink some concrete in there to get it back up. So, we had to take turns driving out to Codham to pick up our mail up until the thaw. Like Mr. Maloche said, or like Deputy Mayor Maloche said, if this was, you know, a senior or people with mobility issues, that would be a real challenge. Fortunately, my husband was able to, four months after it happened, fix it. So, I hope we... So I hope we can take that into account.
Thank you. Chris, did you want to comment on this, please?
I'd like to. Let Counselor comment.
Oh, was there somebody else? Oh, Counselor Vandenberg, sorry about that.
I won't give you the full tale of it, but I too have been a victim. And I tell you, trying to deal with Canada Post is, I mean, talk about the agency from hell. You know, I won't go into it, just awful. But I lose my mailbox now three to five times a year because I'm on the earner. But I use a temporary, a concrete-filled five-gallon bucket. So when the slush hits it at 60, 70 kilometers an hour, you know, it's blasted 20 feet. So I just have to crawl down in the ditch and haul it out. But people are right. For old people, old people can't do that. Maybe we should offer some sort of system of a temporary...like you guys could do a couple of those, like five or 10-gallon concrete things and just plunk it down for older people who can't replace their own posts or replace their own mailbox. Or I don't know if we have any leverage at all with Canada Post because, yeah. I mean, they wouldn't deliver my mail for five months when I moved in because I had the wrong phone number, you know? So, well, those people are terrible. But I think we need to help people who go through this. So, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Council member? I'll go to Chris.
Through you, Mayor. It does happen quite a bit, actually. It is an operational issue. We definitely feel for people that lose their mailboxes this way. However, it's an allowable encroachment in our right-of-way. All right? We're allowing people to put their mailbox in our right-of-way so that they can collect that mail. That location is designated through the Canada Post restrictions and guidelines. You know, we don't set the location. You pick your location. So it does become an issue. It does become an issue in terms of, you know, was the post rotted? Was it not? I'll tell you, we definitely err on the side of, sure, it was the plow that hit it. Snow is heavy regardless of it being ice and chunk. You know, you're going down these roads and piling these roads, wet snow and whatnot. They will remove these mailboxes with ease. So to get to a point where we're helping people and, you know, we'll have those same issues, for us to be the ones that have to go install this and then pick the location, that's not something I would put on the Town of Essex to enter into that type of scenario. The temporary post that Counselor Vandenberg brought up is maybe an in-between here, all right? Instead of offering a post and a mailbox to somebody, we offer a post that's in a bucket of concrete with the mailbox attached to it. And that becomes, you know, the mailbox until the spring when they can relocate their mail. So it does happen quite a bit. This policy is really putting in words the policy that we've been carrying through since I've been here. It was just with the new manager of operations, we thought, you know, it's something, let's get something on paper. It's been on paper before. I'm not sure in which format or how far it's been taken, but it's been around this Council. It's very similar to what a lot of neighboring municipalities do. You won't find, I'm not saying any, you won't find very many municipalities that will actually go offer and put them in for them. So, you know, that being said, I can look at the temporary situation. I can bring that back in terms of the policy. I kind of wanted to get it out here as a report so that Council has an idea of how we're going to be operating this winter. So that if somebody says, "I lost my mailbox," at least you can say, "Well, yeah, we have a policy where we're doing this. We're looking at maybe making changes to that." But it gives you a little bit of ammunition as a new Council in terms of how we operate that way. So, that being said, what I can look at is in-between, maybe something temporary and come back in the new year with something with that policy.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, through your worship. Mr. Nepsy, so we offer, we give them a new mailbox and money for a post?
No, through your worship, we'll drop a post and a mailbox.
You drop the post office one?
Yeah, we drop the post for them to install. If they need it.
So it's not replacement, it's not replacement cost of what they had there?
No, it's a...no, and that's very...it's in there as well as that we supply a standard rural mailbox. If you've got fancy ornate metal-worked mailbox, that's your choice, absolutely. But if this happens, again, allowable encroachment in our right-of-way, we'll give you a mailbox so that you can collect your mail and move on that way.
Thank you, I think.
Thank you. To the motion. All in favor of receiving this? Yeah, to receive it.
Receive and direct administration to come back with the policy.
Receive and direct administration to come back with the... Counselor Bondi?
Just through you to Chris's department, can we just try to keep...I know it's probably hard, just try to keep track of how many this happens to so we...so Council knows going forward it happened to 15, 20, or 400, then at least...like, because many could be 15. Like, it'd be nice to know if it's 15, 40, or 400. It would just be nice, maybe, because planning going forward, maybe, maybe some onus is on the residents saying, "Hey, you know, this is not an ideal location." So it's hard to troubleshoot unless we have numbers. Now...
Through your worship, just a comment on that. It's also hard to get numbers when the season is so variable. That's part of the problem with bringing data back to say, "Oh, we only had 10 this year." Well, next year it might be 40. So we can, definitely, we'll track and then at least we can start a log for future consideration.
Thanks, Chris.
8.12 Planning Report 2018-51. Event signage for nonprofit organizations for receipt and that Council approve the placement of one event advertising sign on an annual basis for the Essex Optimists Soccer League for a period of 30 days and that permission for the placement of nonprofit community-serving special events signage be delegated to the Director of Community Services without the need for prior authorization. Jason McKee rezoning application at 230 Jackson Street in Colchester. And this is together with Bylaw 1765 to amend the general bylaw 1037 and Bylaw 1766 to enter into a site plan control agreement. One point of clarification is with respect to 1765. Our policy planner, Jeff Watson, brought it to our attention that for clarification purposes, subparagraph 3 of that Bylaw 1765 should read before one dwelling unit, should read, "The dwelling units shall be maintained exclusively for tourist accommodation except that one dwelling unit." Just wanted to note that on the bylaw for clarification.
Support by Counselor Bondi, second by Counselor Verbeek. Any questions on it? All in favor? I can't wait to get started, Jason.
8.14 Planning Report 2018-49. Essex Town Center Limited rezoning application. And this is together with letters of opposition and Bylaw 1768 for receipt and for three...sorry, and for two ratings to 1768 for provisional adoption this evening.
So I'm going to have to ask Jeff to bring us through this because I want to know details as to what we are adhering to as far as lot widths. I know planning's coming back and saying, "Yes, we should go to 40-foot lots." I'm still not in favor of 40-foot lots. So I'm not in favor of this. I'm not moving forward on this. I'm going to turn this down if we're talking about a whole subdivision of 40-foot lots. Sounds like there might not be. But I need to know the details of this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, 40-foot lots is in the bylaw. The bylaw deals with several matters which were application for zoning changed by Rimo Valente for Essex Town Center. And what was requested was that 40-foot single-family dwelling lots be permitted as opposed to the bylaw requirement of 50 feet right now for lot frontage. That the exterior side yard, which is side yard abutting a side street, be reduced from 15 feet as the normal requirement, down to four feet where the side yard abuts, say, 66 foot right-of-way and to 10 feet where the side yard abuts, say, 50 foot right-of-way. And in Essex Town Center, it's a mix of the two. The other request was for the increase in garage width to accommodate a larger garage for townhouses and semis. And the neighbors also requested that the zoning bylaw restrict it to 50-foot lots for the properties that actually back onto Maidstone Avenue properties. Mr. Valente has agreed to that and that's reflected in the bylaw. But as Deputy Mayor Malas says, approval of this would allow for 40-foot single-family dwelling lots. And it would allow them across the board from, you know, throughout the entire subdivision. The rationale for that, and recall that I did a presentation to Council about, you know, what a 40-foot lot, single-family dwelling looks like relative to 50-foot lots and so on. And the rationale for it is essentially the zoning bylaw currently permits 50 feet for a single-family dwelling and about 25 feet for a townhome and about 30 feet for a semi detached dwelling. So basically, the idea is that this is another alternative as opposed to townhouses and semis, to have a 40-foot lot to fit sort of in that slot between a 30-foot semi and a 50-foot single.
Yeah. So Jeff, one of my questions was, if we pass this tonight, does this allow for that entire subdivision? Like, I had thought that administration was going to come back with a proposed plan of subdivision for the entire piece of property to show us a mixture of 40, 50, 60 townhouses and so on. I don't want to see it 100% 40-foot lots. I don't want to see it 100% townhouses. I want to see what mixture they're going to put in there. I'm okay with some 40-foot lots, but maybe on the streets where we have 40-foot lots, maybe we want to have 66-foot rights-of-way and parking on both sides of the street. But I want to see what the whole picture looks like. I don't want to pass it in pieces and say, "He wants 40-foot lots." You know, we're not going to develop this piece of property unless you give us 40-foot lots. No, I want to see what the whole picture looks like and what the mixture looks like. I thought we were going to come back and look at stormwater retention at the same time to see and try and move that around. But I know there's a combination, you're saying there's a combination here of street sizes. I don't agree with cutting the corners down to four feet from the road. We're going to end up with a slump. I can't say it any other way. Villages of Riverside. I've seen Villages of Riverside. I've had friends that have lived in there over the years. There were beautiful homes. It was the way of the future when they first built that. And when they built it, right away you could tell there was no parking. They'd have friends over and we'd have to park down the street, around the block, to come over and visit whenever they had everybody over. People were getting parking tickets for parking in spots where they shouldn't have been parking. I need to see the layout, that's what I personally want to see, of what this subdivision's going to look like in total before I can say, "This is what...this is okay to do." This is a big project for the Town of Essex and is going to determine the way we look going forward. What kind of image do we want to put out there as far as what we want to plan for this subdivision? And I don't want to squeeze everything in so compact. And I know we keep talking about, "Well, that's the way the province is pushing us." Yes, but you don't have to have one subdivision that is totally compacted down into so that you can fit 20,000 people in 100 acres. We don't...that's not...we're different. Every place is different. And I think the image of Essex, I'm not sure if that's what we want for Essex, myself, personally. So is there any way that we can get a picture of what this subdivision would look like before we pass this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you are correct. In fact, we have a Council resolution, you know, according to our own recommendation from planning, that you see the big picture. It should be part of a larger package and so the Council can see what the spread of units are. You're absolutely right. If the bylaw permits singles, it permits semis, it permits townhomes, and I think it's only fair that Councils see what that distribution's going to be. We don't want 1,000 townhomes. We don't want, you know, nothing entirely but single-family. We want some sort of mix. And I think what we've done is we've actually stated that to the developer and we've actually had our first meeting with Dylan Consulting, who actually drafted a plan showing an overall distribution. It's not one that we agree with and it's not one that we're prepared to take to Council at this point, but that's an ongoing thing. If Council wants to defer the rezoning until you see a plan that you're satisfied with, that's perfectly fine. I have no objection to that. I think it's perfectly fair.
Thank you. That answers my question. Counselor DeArckman.
Thank you. Through the Mayor. So what we've been discussing is what we are prepared to allow in the subdivision, knowing that we need to have various sizes of homes, various costs of homes, all the things that we have to meet through provincial mandates. My understanding was this original, this bylaw is just to allow those kinds of things to be built. This isn't a site plan application. This isn't...we don't have on the blocks, addresses, what's going to be built, where we've made suggestions that the townhomes be in Block 12 or Block 17 and Block 18. Those recommendations that were brought to Council. But this particular bylaw is just to say, "We are going to move in this direction." But we're not giving him carte blanche freedom to just say, "Okay, this is covered now. Now I'm going to build side-by-sides and 40-foot homes wherever I want." This still needs to come to us as a site plan, doesn't it? For approval of what's going to be built in each phase.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The property's in a hold, a holding zone, which means that it's zoned for residential development and...but it prohibits the issuance of permits until such time as that hold is removed. And the purpose of the hold is twofold. Number one, to have a planned subdivision, and number two, to have the development services in place. The original concept plan for this and what the services were based on was for essentially 550-foot, 50-foot, single-family lots. That was it. And the reason why we're back, of course, is because Mr. Valente has requested zoning changes to accommodate a wider range of uses, or, sorry, a reduced range in terms of the bylaw requirements for the types of uses he wants. But he is entitled to singles, semis, and townhomes as of right right now. The difference is because of the hold, he can't build because he has to provide upgraded services to accommodate a higher density because that's essentially what he's doing. The other thing is that the bylaw, or he's...these are...this property is subdivided into blocks. It's not divided into lots. So because they're essentially street blocks, he has to get what's called part lot control exemption. And what that means is Council has to see a plan and understand or be prepared to give that exemption because it has to be approved by Council and ultimately by the county so that he can actually register the lots as part of a planned subdivision. So the holding zone and the part lot control exemption are your powers to control the type of subdivision. The problem, though, is that the bylaw does allow single semis and townhomes. So if, for example, Council said, "Well, I don't want 40-foot lots here. I want 50-foot lots there." He would have the right of appeal if he had those 40-foot lots granted to him, okay? Because he would say, "I'm entitled to this. Why are you holding me back?" So, you know, it's a chicken-and-egg situation. We can't really deal with him in 40-foot lots until he's actually allowed to have them. But on the other hand, I think Council should actually see what the lotting distribution is going to be because it could be a whole lot of things. And we haven't worked that out yet. So the question is, do you approve the zoning bylaw and open the door that we can negotiate? So the question is, do you approve the zoning bylaw and open the door that we can negotiate different lot sizes, or would you rather see it as one comprehensive package all at once?
Further to that, so the idea of getting a full comprehensive package all at once is, I would imagine, some ways out because they're going to, this type of development, they're going to see what sells and what works block by block. I understand we need to have the stormwater plan, we need to have our sewers, our systems, our services all ahead of time, but we know what the max is going to be. I just wonder why we're looking at this tonight if it's, if it's something that isn't prepared for the developer to get started. Your last statement being, if we pass it, he can start planning and he can start pushing the first phase of it. I think we need to get moving on this plan, and I understand the deputy mayor's concerns 100%, but I'm also concerned with, there's one more thing, reason why, there's another year that went by that nothing happened here. There's another year that went by that nothing happened here. I think it's time for us to get going with what's happening here. We know what's selling in the county, and yes, we're different, yes, we're Essex, but not everybody wants a 50-foot lot and a big yard. Some people are more than happy with 40-foot lots. We've had ample time to go out and look at other subdivisions and look at places in Kingsville, look at places in Windsor that have these kinds of buildings. And I think it's time for us to get moving, get developing in this area. So I would be prepared to act on that bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Van Der Dolen.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The 20 years we've been looking at this, 20 years we've been waiting for something to happen, and we finally have them ready to move, and I think it would be a terrible mistake to let this pass. You know, we keep, we keep hearing this denigrating term about snout houses, and I think that's a terrible way to sort of run down the only thing that a lot of our citizens can afford. But like, the reality of our marketplace is that sometimes people can only afford small, ugly houses behind a Canadian Tire store. You know, you, somebody, you referred, the deputy mayor referred to the Villages of Riverside. Well, that was a reaction to economic pressures of the time when, you know, interest rates were 23% and they stuck in these electric houses that now can't be heated with casks. But right now, we're facing an economic crunch where the asset price of houses has gone through the roof. And going door-to-door this summer, I found out that housing and the lack of it, and the lack of choices, is just about the biggest thing facing, facing our community. And we have to allow somebody to build something. I mean, we can keep pushing this down the road and saying, "Well, it's not perfect. We don't like it." But I think if we do that, it'll be a mistake. We're going to be looking at a field for another 20 years. And if he wants to put the lesser houses around the commercial area and close to Maidstone Road, I think that's a good, good idea, and going forward, we can enforce a higher standard on the rest of those blocks as he has to have them approved one by one.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody else?
Counselor, I have to agree 100% with what you just said. That property's been vacant there for years, and now we have a developer ready to go. And like you said, you can go to Windsor, or you can go to Kingsville and buy 40-foot lots now, and with a nice dwelling on it. So we have to be open-minded here, and we can't, I understand your views too, Deputy Mayor, but we can't keep saying, "No, no, 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 no. We want development, and we got to have it here." So I agree 100%. Thank you.
Counselor Garen.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that lots been there, those, been waiting for building for at least 20 years. And my sister-in-law lives in the Windsor area in a cocoa development. They have a lot of the 40-foot lots. She does have some complaints, but she also reminds me that it was her choice to live there. We have other properties in Essex that people can choose to live in. I do have some concerns with the parking and narrow streetways, but again, I don't think we should be overlooking this. I think we should be moving forward on it.
As moved by Counselor Bjorkman, seconded by Counselor Van Der Dolen to receive the report and give provisional passage of Bylaw 1768. So presumably, if passed, it would come back for 3rd January 14th.
All in favor, all recorded?
Recorded vote. Okay. On the motion in question, Deputy Mayor Malash, how do you vote?
No.
Counselor Garen?
Yes.
Support. Counselor Verbeek?
Support.
Counselor Bjorkman?
Support.
Counselor Bondi?
Support.
Counselor Van Der Dolen?
Support.
Counselor Bowman?
Opposed.
Mayor Snidely?
Support.
With a recorded vote of six in favor and two opposed, the motion carries. Item 10, any updates from County Council from the mayor or the deputy mayor?
We haven't had a meeting yet. No record.
11.1 on the agenda, that the correspondence, that all of the correspondence listed in agenda item 11.1 be received and where indicated to further share where suitable.
Counselor Bondi, second here. Deputy Mayor Malash, all in favor?
11.2, correspondence to be considered for receipt or receiving support, that the correspondence from the municipality of Northern Bruce be received or received and supported. And if council so chooses to support, that the appropriate letter of support be sent to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, Ministry of Finance, Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, and the Towne of Kearney.
Receiving support.
Counselor Bondi, receiving support. Second here. Counselor Van Der Dolen, any questions? All in favor? Carry.
Item 12, committee meeting minutes, that the minutes so listed, together with any recommendations noted therein, be received and adopted as circulated.
Counselor Bjorkman, second here. Counselor Verbeek, any questions on it? All in favor? Carry.
Under item 15, notice of motion, the following notice of motion will be, is being presented this evening with no formal discussion or action, and will be brought forward to the January 14th meeting for consideration by council at that time. The notice of motion brought by Mayor Snidely, that administration begin to investigate opportunities to preservice the industrial zone, expanded settlement lands south of King's Highway, Number 3, and County Road 8, and the methods of cost recovery. Item 16, any reports and/or announcements from council members this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since he probably won't do it himself, I would just like to bring congratulations to Counselor Morley Bowman as our alternate at County Council. We had a striking committee meeting tonight from 5:00 to 6:00, and Counselor Bowman was appointed, so it's good to let everybody know.
This is our last meeting.
Oh, oh, that's okay. Everybody else can do the Christmas.
Counselor Van Der Dolen?
No, I passed, thanks.
Counselor Bowman?
And myself, I would like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and keep up the good work, administrative staff and council. Have a good holiday. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to wish all the residents out there a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And it's been, it's been a heck of a year with the way our old council going out, and now we've got a brand-new council. It looks like we're going to work very well together. Hopefully, we can get a lot of done in the next year and over the next four years. Thanks again for all your support over the election time, but very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I too just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and I learned, especially in my canvassing and talking to so many residents, most of us have crazy hectic lives, and I just hope that everybody gets a little bit of time over the holiday season to enjoy their loved ones. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Counselor Bjorkman?
Thank you very much. Yep, Merry Christmas to everybody, Merry Christmas, council, all of our residents. There's some great things going on through the town over the Christmas holidays. We've got free skating, free swimming, a number of things to look at. The Harrow Family New Year's Eve, which will go from 6:00 till 9:30 in Harrow on New Year's Eve. Anyways, there's lots going on. You can check out the website. There's lots there to see. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Moving on to bylaws, item 17 in the agenda, 1769 for three readings this evening being a bylaw to provide for financing in the amount of 852-397, sorry, 396-66 for capital works identified within community services.
Counselor Bondi, seconded by Counselor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor?
And 1771, be in the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of this December 17th regular meeting of council.
Deputy Mayor Malash, and seconded by Counselor Bjorkman. All in favor? Carry.